Please stand. Um, a pledge of even.
To the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic.
Stand.
For which is stand. One nation. Under God.
Visible. For the justice for all.
Um, if, if everybody could just stay standing for a moment, uh, like to have a moment of silence to recognize a Valley View student who passed away. Thank you very much. Okay, um. With our agenda, I believe we are at special presentations. Is that right?
Yes. We don't have one this week though. That's for next week.
Okay. So, uh, Superintendent comments?
Okay. So our Persons of the Year survey for 2020 went out and they're due at the end of, end of the day on June 10th. I have a meeting scheduled for June 11th and we plan to announce the winners on June 22nd. There will be, um, a donation made in the person's honor and the winners to the social services and they'll also get some gift certificates to local businesses as well. That'll be the winners and then they'll also get a plaque and they'll be, their name will be put on the plaque in the board office too. And this is sponsored by the, by the, uh, combined PTA's and the Foundation of Denville. And we publicized it in the newspapers and our website and social media as well as the Friday folder and a direct email as well. We do have several, um, nominees already somewhere in the 50 range. Um, graduations, virtual and others. So all three schools will be doing some type of a virtual graduation. And all three schools will be doing some other type of a graduation too. At this point, there aren't, eh, there's no plan to do any type of a live graduation, like a typical graduation, like outside with, with, um, you know, everybody represented. We, there are some, some other outside the box kind of ideas that everybody's working on. And, um, there will be information coming very soon about that. You'll either be getting it tomorrow or the next day and, and one of the reasons for putting it off as far as we could was because the, uh, guidance from the state has changed several times and we want to make sure we're doing the, uh, the best we possibly can do in, in the amount of time that we have to put it together. Um, so right now the guidance on the, the allowed out, exi- um, outside graduation doesn't really permit for us to do it because it's a maximum of 25 people. So that would be about seven kids and we need, we'd need to do somewhere around between 35 and 40 of them. So that's not something that we're going to plan to do and that also has to be in the summer too, which also causes some issues. So for right now, um, the plan is everybody's going to do a virtual and there will be some other type of special event for the kids. And, um, all schools also have a banner that we purchased and installed at each school. Right now the plan is ESY will be virtual. We may, we had to make that decision without guidance from the state. We have not received guidance on ESY, but due to the logistical concerns and it's only about three weeks away, we had to make some decisions. So our ESY is, is virtual. We will use some of the funds from the CARES Act to help supplement it and, and offer some programs to other, other kids other than just special ed kids. So some of that information has been sent out to parents. We're looking for a group of people to do that. We also have, um, we will be doing it in some different ways. There will be some one-on-one type things to help catch kids up that may be falling behind due to, um, the COVID crisis. The New York Giants football camp that has been at our district for several years. Um, since I got here, so I guess, uh, this would have been the seventh year. Did cancel for 2020 and at this time the New York Yankees camp is still, uh, is on as planned. That's, that's it for my comments tonight.
Steve, Don here. Uh, I had a question on the, uh, the, uh, Persons of the Year awards, uh, we can do that, uh, virtually and we have the representation from all those different stakeholders like we've had in the past to, uh, select the people?
Yes, we do.
Okay. We got a board member on there?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
Thank you, Dr. Forte. Can you just reiterate the deadline for that, um, Person of the Year award submission?
11:59 on June 10th.
Thank you. Uh, Dr. Cullis, Assistant Superintendent comments?
Uh, I have a few. I'll just start by saying our kindergarten numbers. Uh, right now we're sitting at Lakeview at 107 and, uh, 96 at Riverview. In to, we have two flex students that have been unassigned, a total of 180. I'm sorry, 107 at Lakeview, 76 at Riverview, two flex and 185 total. So those were our numbers. Sitting, uh, class sizes right now are 19 at Lakeview and two classes of 19 at Riverview, two classes of 18. So we're pretty, pretty even with our numbers. I have some other comments that I, I wanted to address too of some issues that have been, been addressed this week, but you know, good evening everyone. You know, over the past few months, we've had witnessed significant changes in our world. It's different than we once knew it. You know, the motions of our students and family and staff and community have been tested. And as this is our last meeting before the end of the year, I really wanted to thank everyone. Because even in this pandemic, we were there. Everyone stepped up to provide support to the children of Denville. I want to thank our staff for the endless hours that you spent learning, planning and using technology to make our educational experience as meaningful as they could be. You've demonstrated creativity and empathy in your approach to instruction on a daily basis. Thank you to our support staff and administration for keeping the essential services of the school district moving. And our bus drivers and aides for driving around the district daily just to deliver schoolwork and lunches to students who needed them. I also want to thank families for supporting your children at home in ways that you could have never imagined you would have been asked to do. In more recent days, we've experienced another call to action, one of racial equality and equity. As educators, it is our responsibility to take an active role in ensuring equity for all of our students. We understand that equity does not mean equality. We embed daily practices in our curriculum that celebrate each other and true, truly value the diversity that makes us a rich community. Practices such as providing students with evidence that people who don't look or act like them are still people just like them. The teaching students about multicultural role models and demonstrate that people of all genders, ethnicities and appearances can have a positive influence on the world and deserve to be respected and emulated. Crafting the right environment for culturally responsive learning. Using wall spaces to display posters depicting cultural groups in a non-stereotypical fashion. Teaching students to embrace their own culture and heritage. And providing age-appropriate opportunities to gauge and discussions of equity through literature. Certainly we affirm our commitment to diversity and equity. But we believe it is important, especially at this time, the time really to stop and reflect and ask ourselves, what more can we do? What can we do to better? The first step must be to listen. In order to pair, prepare for future conversations around equity, the members of the administrative team will be virtually attending a workshop this Friday titled Racial Justice in Our Schools. A Blueprint for Action. This opportunity will provide tools and strategies for facilitating meaningful dialogue and promoting responsible civic engagement. I'm also attending a series of Equity Talks through Discovery Education. And we are committed to devoting our first pass meeting, which is our Parent Academy for Student Success for the 2020-21 year to the topic of racial equity. More information will be shared as we get closer to school reopening. So again, I just want to reiterate my thanks for everyone pulling together at this very challenging time and that we know that we're stronger today than we were before. So thank you. This concludes Assistant Superintendents.
Thank you, Dr. Cullis. Uh, Demaris, Business Administrator's comment?
As you will know, the district approved the 2021 school budget back in April with the, uh, state aid amount in, of increase of $258,000. Recently, the governor, um, reduced that increase from state aid by $176,000. We just want, Steve and I want to assure the board that we are prepared to, uh, to cover that void. We've been preparing for many months now trying to, um, prepay different items from next year's now and to assure that if we do get cut, uh, the district is not drastically impacted. So again, I just wanted to assure the board that as of right now with the cut of $176,000, yes, it is a cut. However, we are prepared to, uh, assume that cut and move forward. That's my comment.
Thank you, Demaris. Um, I just wanted to say thank you to you and, um, the rest of the administration and your staff that you have, um, been sharing a lot of information with the board about how much, um, you anticipate being cut, um, and you guys have been anticipating even more than this being cut and you have prepared the district for us to move forward and continue the plans that the district has had in place, um, without it affecting the students and the impact to the district. So I just wanted to say thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, um, at this time it is, I have 19:48, 7:48 PM. Um, we are going to open the, for our first public discussion. Um, if anybody has any comments, um, feel free to unmute yourself or, um, type your name and address in the comments and if somebody who can view the screen, um, sees a comment, please make me aware. Um, we're just going to hold on for a minute and see if we have anybody that wants to share anything.
Laura, to just to let you know, there's no, um, messages typed yet, uh, from, from the public?
Thank you. Um, I have 19:49 now and seeing, um, that there's nobody coming forward. I'm going to close public comments section at this time. It's 19:49 and there will be a second opportunity later in the meeting should a member of the public, um, have a comment or question. Uh, now we are moving on to old business, no action to be taken. Um, Mr. Kim, would you mind moving us through old business, please?
Sure. During the next board meeting, we will be reviewing old business, uh, sections A through C, which will be, section A will go through the treasurer money report and the board secretary report for May 2020. As well as section B, education reports for student enrollment and health office reports for May 2020. And finally, we will be voting on the minutes for the work session and executive session of May 11th and the regular session minutes for May 18th.
Thank you, Mr. Kim. Um, under new business, action to be taken. Um, Mr. Anderson, would you mind moving us through personnel, please?
Sure, be happy to. Uh, if there are no objections, I'd like to move, uh, item one from the regular agenda as well as item two from the addendum. Um, this includes, uh, new hires, resignation, retirement, extra pay salary and adjustments on item one. And item two is the, uh, board to approve the memorandum of agreement with Denville Education Association effective seven twenty, or seven one, 2020 through six thirty, 2023.
I'll second.
Mr. Cass?
I'm sorry, can I, wait, Mrs. Wagner?
Yeah?
I will, I would like to include in number two under personnel that the board will also approve the salary guide, uh, 2020 to 2023 effective July 1st, 2020 through June 30th, 2023.
Mr. Anderson and Mr. Cass, are you okay with that amendment?
Yes.
Does the Ford have any, uh, comments or questions?
I would just, uh, it's, uh, Mikey Anderson. I'd just like to make a quick comment on item number two. I am, uh, first of all, I want to thank the DEA's, uh, negotiation committee and leadership as well as the board, uh, negotiation committee. I know it's a, uh, it's a long process. Uh, we appreciate, uh, the work that's put into it. And, um, most importantly, I'm happy to be providing what I think is a, uh, a fair and good contract for our teachers and, uh, I look forward to three more years of, uh, great relationship between the board and the, uh, Education Association Union. So thank you for everybody involved for, uh, getting it done as quick and effectively as possible.
I would also like to, uh, say pretty much the same thing Mike did. So, uh, I'm just going to say what he said.
Thanks, guys. Anybody else? Um, okay. Roll call, please.
Mr. Kim?
Yes.
Mr. Kim?
Yes.
Mr. Kim?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yeah.
Mr. Laura? Mr. Laura? You're muted.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, um, Mr. Capello, as Mrs. Gould is not here yet, would you mind moving us through instruction and program?
Certainly. If there are no objections under instruction and program tonight, I'd like to, um, move item number one, that we approve the FID survey 2.0, uh, which was attached, which the board members received. Um, we reviewed this, uh, uh, survey with Dr. Cullis in the curriculum committee. Um, we did suggest a few modifications to the survey. Um, generally it is the same survey in terms of the format of the questions as the previous survey. So the data would be meaningful, but there were a few items that, uh, that are added, um, to this one.
Second.
Mr. Laura, thank you. Comments or questions?
This is Don.
Oh, God, you, that, well, Don, you go ahead. I think I know where you're headed. Go ahead.
Yeah, uh, Don here, um, had a couple of things for, uh, the future. Um, first of all, I think the, uh, again, the first survey we did very well. I'm glad to see that this, uh, current one was, uh, modified a little bit. Um, I think as we get towards the end of the year, it would be beneficial to have a survey of the staff. Um, see how they, uh, felt about the virtual learning, uh, pluses and minuses. It was new for everybody. So I think that will help us for, uh, future situations. So a survey for the staff. Um, number two, a second survey for special ed, uh, parents. Um, I think the, you know, it's lumping them in with, uh, the regular school population. Um, I don't think we're going to get at all of the, uh, intricacies that, uh, affected them with the virtual learning. Uh, so it's, um, it's something that we should put together, uh, to, to get a good, good reading on how the special ed students, uh, did with the, uh, the virtual, uh, learning. Um, and then also, um, we have the stats by school for, uh, Lakeview, Valley View and, um, Riverview. And I'm wondering, um, since, you know, you have the two elementary schools and the middle school, that maybe the survey questions should be different for the elementary schools and a different set for, uh, Valley View. Uh, we do this again. Uh, something to, to maybe look at because the curriculum's a lot different. Um, just the whole environment of the school is a lot different in value compared to the, uh, the elementary schools. So, uh, again, this is all new to us. I, I think we've made a lot of progress so far, but, uh, more to do. Now hopefully we'll be back in the classroom in September. We will have to do virtual learning again. But, um, it could come up again. So it's good to have it on the shelf and ready to go and have all the stats that we need to, uh, do it effectively.
I think this time, thank you, Don. Um, we are doing a survey with staff, so we should be able to get all of that, those kinds of questions that you're asking specifically about their experiences, but moreover with the curriculum and the technology. So that will show of what they would need or to do differently.
Yeah.
This version, I think we'll be able to dive a little bit deeper because we did not have, we didn't have the buildings and the, i- if they were involved in separate programs, whether it be, um, special education programs or ESL and so forth. So now we should be able to get to the data a little more granularly. And we couldn't do that before. So now we can at least separate it out a little bit better, I think, but I think it's always good to, to keep in mind of how we can get the best data that we can.
Okay, um, if you're doing the survey, is, is the survey on the staff now in, in progress or it's, uh, being developed?
Uh, the surveys are being done by the, uh, in-house professional development, the SKIPS, the School Improvement Committees are the ones who, uh, are administering the survey. But it is already developed.
But you're doing a separate one for the staff. Is that in progress now or it's still to be created?
It's in progress.
Okay. Um, do we have questions on there about virtual learning? Because the feedback I get, you know, some teachers are, uh, doing a lot of it and some teachers are not.
That survey is specifically for virtual learning and that's it, just focused on the last three months of instruction.
Yeah. So we'd be able to get a good read as, uh, what teachers used it and found it effective and what teachers, uh, stayed away from it.
We certainly can get their, their feedback. I hope nobody stayed away from it. They were in trouble because somebody wasn't teaching. But, um, I think that we can certainly get, um, you know, get a sense of where we differently, if, should we have to do this in a few?
Okay, thank you.
Dr. Cullis, when do you anticipate having the results of the staff survey?
I don't know if they gave the exact date. Uh, I think that the ending date for it was June 15th was the closing date. So I'm sure that we could quickly turn that data around. I mean, it is all done electronically, so it's pretty easy data to, to turn.
Okay, so you think it sounds like? I'm sorry, I think I, I stepped on you a little bit. It sounds like we might have preliminary data for our next meeting. Is that right?
We should have some preliminary data for the 22nd. Uh, we'll have some parent, uh, information back, but certainly not all of it. Because we'll roll it out as soon as we prove the survey to the, to parents. And, uh, if we're not the 22nd, then certainly for July.
Thank you. Mr. Capello, did you have something else you wanted to say?
Uh, on this, um, just that during, in the committee, we had also discussed, uh, another, um, survey in the summer that was going to be a little more in-depth and I think was going to look at some of the virtual, a, a few more detailed questions about virtual learning also. Some, uh, more details on the health, the health and welfare, social, emotional. Um, Dr. Cullis, when do you think you'll have that survey, kind of the, the outlines of it starting to be pulled together?
I'm sorry, I broke up, you broke up a little bit. Um,
Okay.
The way I'm sorry.
Yes, okay, I'll start again. In the committee, we talked about a follow-on survey in the summer because I know we didn't want to really modify this one too much to keep the data consistent with the first one. But the question is, is when do you think you'll have the outlines of what that survey will look like available?
I think I would like to wait until probably, it probably won't be to the end of June, it looks like, to see what questions. I don't want to give a really lengthy survey again because then they just don't want, you know, it's hard for people to continue to participate. But if I can pick out which areas are the most concerned and which would be the most valuable data to collect, that would be where we'd want to pull out or design more specific questions. So I would think end of June.
Okay.
Does anybody have any other questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, roll call, please.
Yes.
Mr. Cullis?
Yes.
Mr. Capello?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yeah.
Mr. Laura?
Yes.
Mrs. Wagner?
Yeah. Um, moving on to finance, Mr. Kim, would you please move us through finance?
Sure, I'd be happy to. Um, but real quick, Demaris, when you do roll call, I think your mic is being covered because I could barely hear, um, the board members' names. So, uh, but, uh, I'd like to motion that we approve the following resolutions under finance. Number one is to approve the settlement agreement for the student uh, and the placement at Barnstable Academy for the total not to exceed 27,845. Number two, to accept the donation of ball, ball salt, rock core samples for Valley View Middle School Science Department donated by First Environment, Inc. And finally, number three, to accept the donation of $395 to pay for the 2019, 2020 eighth grade virtual graduation donated by the Valley View, Valley View School PTA.
I'll second.
I don't know who the second was, sorry.
Mr. Cass?
Okay. Um, I think if, we can, I can personally hear you much better and for everybody, um, participating, if you're not speaking, if you could mute yourself, um, I think that might help us hear others as well. Um, does anybody have any comments or questions?
I'd like to thank the, uh, Valley View PTA for the generous donation. Um, that I'm sure those funds will be put to good use, uh, with some of the ideas. So, thank you.
Um, we should also recognize the, um, donation from the, um, ball set rock core sample, uh, for the Valley View Middle School Science Department. Oh, donated by, sorry, First Environment. So thank you to First Environment. Does anybody have anything else? Okay, uh, roll call, please.
Yes.
Mr. Cass?
Yes.
Mr. Laura?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Yeah.
Mr. Laura?
I think that's me, so yes.
I'm not sure what's going. Mr. Wagner?
Yeah. Okay, moving on to operations. Uh, Mr. Cass, would you move us through operations, please?
Will do. You have two items for buildings and grounds. Uh, the first item to approve is the contract with Generation Services, a state-approved vendor, and they're going to replace the existing electrical panelable boards at Lakeview School for the amount of $31,250. Item number two is to approve the following options for graduation ceremonies per Governor Murphy's Executive Order, number 142, uh, to make sure we ensure the compliance with the health and safety requirements to protect students, educators, families during the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic. Um, actual ceremonies be determined at a later date based upon guidance from the New Jersey Department of Education. Um, as Dr. Forte indicated earlier, we're, uh, and going to be doing a virtual graduation. Uh, as you can see, the bullet points there, the options the governor put out there was the virtual, which we're doing, uh, a drive-through, drive-in, drive-by option and a modified in-person outdoor ceremonies. So that's it for, uh, buildings and grounds.
I second.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Kim and Mr. Cass. And just so that the public is clear, um, the item number two about the graduations as, as Mr. Cass just mentioned and as Dr. Forte as Mr. Cass just mentioned and as Dr. Forte mentioned, these, this vote is not indicative of what will be happening. The administration in the next day or two will be notifying the community about the additional plans for, in addition to the virtual graduation. This is just, we are voting on the tentative plans. Does anybody have any questions or comments for the operations?
This is James. If I may, I'd also like to, for the public's sake, remind everyone that the $31,000 for item number one will be.
James, I think you just muted yourself.
Oh, forgive me. Yeah, this, the funds for this $31,000 will be paid for by reserves instead of from the general fund, so.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you, Mr. Kim. Does anybody have anything else? Okay, seems like no questions or comments, so roll call please.
Mr. Kim?
Yes.
Mr. Cass? Mr. Cass? Mr. Capella?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yeah.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Wagner?
Yeah.
Mr. Cass, are you back? We might have lost him.
I think, I think by the participants, I think he muted himself. That's the way it looks.
Agreed.
Cindy, can you unmute Mr. Cass?
No, Damaris, I can't. Google doesn't allow for you to unmute anybody in case of privacy issues.
Thank you.
Does anybody know that you have to star something to unmute on the phone? Do you know, Cindy?
It's star six.
Star six, Mr. Cass.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
All right. I had questions before we voted. You have people looking at these other two options. We're doing virtual and we have the other two options. Is the board going to be able to vote on a alternate to the virtual before it's done?
Mr. Cass, are you asking if the board is going to be able to vote on whatever alternative plans the administration is putting forward?
Correct.
We're meeting again in two weeks, which would be after the graduate, you know, the end of school. So if they're doing something, I believe, Dr. Forte, that the plan is to do something not in person, but some type of honoring of the graduates prior to the 17th. Is that correct, Dr. Forte?
Yes, it is.
So then that wouldn't give the, the board would not be voting on those alternative arrangements. But as Dr. Forte had said, there's not going to be an in-person scenario that they can force. There certainly would not be an in-person scenario prior to the 17th based on the current regulations.
The earliest we can do a, an in-person, according to the governor's regulations, would be the 6th of July. And right now, you can only have 25 people there. That's why I was saying it would take a long time to do it because we'd have to, we can only have seven kids at a time with their families and the school personnel.
Yeah.
So this is just in case we get guidance and we want to move on something else, we, our insurance company, our insurance company required that we have a board resolution.
Okay. I got it. Yeah, I'm just concerned about, we're sure that there won't be any, you know, person-to-person, you know, activities. You know, that's, that's fine by me. I'm happy with the virtual. I just think there's too many unknowns before. I know, you watch on the news, some high schools, they've done drive-bys and all kinds of stuff like that, but I'm just concerned about the safety of the kids and, so we'll see what happens.
Mr. Cass, I think that whatever plans the building administrators have, they'll be following the strict safety guidelines given by the governor and the CDC. And these, these two are possibilities, such as the drive-through, drive-in. That is a possibility that we would, you know, we would be voting for against this evening. And that would enable them to participate in that. But if they do utilize that option, they will be following all the recommended safety guidelines. I don't know if that helps answer your question at all.
That's good. Let's vote. That's fine. Well, you put me down as a yes. I guess everybody else voted when I was on mute.
Thank you.
Okay, so now we are on to new business, no action to be taken. Mr. Anderson, would you bring us through personnel, please?
Sure. At the next meeting, myself or somebody else will be moving items one through six. They include new hires, summer help cash in of vacation days, as well as several employees for leave of absence. Yep, leave of absence are a majority of them, actually. So, yeah, that was it. Any questions?
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Anderson or the personnel committee? Okay, moving on to IMP. Mrs. Kullis isn't here, is she?
No, I don't believe she's joined yet.
Okay. Mr. Capella, would you mind walking us through next meeting IMP plan?
Sure. At the next meeting, I or someone else will be moving under instruction and program, currently one item, workshop expenses for a workshop for a Lakeview teacher for the Teachers College Unit Study of Phonics Summer Institute. Cost with the cost of the seminar plus travel.
Thank you, Mr. Capella. Dr. Kullis, can you tell us if this has been, is this still an in-person?
I know, so we will. There will not be the travel, it'll be the 850, no, I'm sorry, the phonics is 650, no travel. It's all virtual. So even though we approved some way back in March, I mean, that it, since it's virtual, that actually saves $250 per person, which allowed us to send three more people this summer.
That's great news. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Kim, would you mind moving us through the upcoming policy revision?
Sure. During the next meeting, I or someone else will be moving the, to approve four policies and regulations, attendance, tardiness, promotion and retention, and late arrival and early dismissal for second reading.
Thank you. Would you like to continue on with finance?
Sure, if there's no questions about policy revisions. During our next meeting for, under finance, I myself or someone else will be motioning and moving the resolutions as presented in the agenda. The first will be the checklists. The second, number two, will be the resolution regarding capital reserve transfers. The third will be regarding, a resolution regarding maintenance reserve transfers. And then, I didn't realize there's, the remainder four through nine as, which includes contracts, to award contracts, to approve the 2021 school year professional support non-public service agreements and non-public chapter supporting documents, the approval of the Cashman Landscap contract for $34,990 prorated for the, which is prorated for the 2021 school year, as well as Resolution 7, 8, and 9.
Thank you, Mr. Kim.
I'm sorry, we didn't hear you, Damaris.
Not sure why my microphone is not working. It goes, it's five, six, seven, and eight should not be there. It's all part of number four. So before, and then number five will be the grant.
I think I understand what Damaris is saying. So, Damaris, correct me if I'm wrong, but numbers five, six, seven, and eight should be bullets, the subbullets under number, Resolution Number Four, is that what I'm hearing?
That is correct.
Okay, so number four will be a resolution with five, six, seven, and eight as subbullets under Resolution Number Four. And then number nine will be converted to Resolution Number Five.
Thank you.
I have a question about Resolutions Two and Three. These are resolutions that we approve every year, is that correct?
That is correct. Every year we approve, during the month of June, we need to approve any monies that we will be depositing into the reserves. If we do not approve the resolution in June, we cannot deposit any funds, excess funds that we have after the audit in the reserve accounts. So this is a required resolution.
And these dollar amounts that are identified in these resolutions are, are just numbers that are dictated by regulation or numbers that have been approved in the past? For example, the $2 million for capital reserve and the $1 million for maintenance reserve.
These are numbers that we had, it has been approved in the past and we are keeping it consistent. It could be less than that, and that's the goal. There was one year that we approved less and we had more excess surplus, and therefore we couldn't deposit it into the reserve. We had to put it in the budget in the following year. So this way we covered, if we have enough funds, we can deposit as much as the board wants in the reserve accounts without any limits.
I understand. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Does anybody have any other questions? Okay, moving on to operations for next meeting. Mr. Cass, would you move us through that, please?
Okay, before I talk about the motion for the next meeting on the transportation, I just want to highlight a couple of few, few things from the Operations Committee meeting on the 20th, on the second that we had. We already approved the Lakeview School panel that was an agenda item and next week we'll approve cash landscaping. It's really great that we have them continuing do our landscaping. They do a great job and the current bid they have will include the Riverview Landscapes to do the work there, too. Transportation, you got the committee report, so I'm not going to go over everything. But take a look at that to-do list. We have a lot of issues that have cropped up under transportation that are going to need solutions in the near future. We've been discussing the bus driver shortage. That continues. And we're at the point where we're going to start having to buy buses, so we have that dilemma of you buy a bus and there's nobody to drive it. We're spending money that's, that can't be used. So that's another issue. And then we have the COVID, post-COVID transportation on the buses. A lot of speculation, rumors going on there. But there'll probably be some type of protocols that we'll have to follow for transporting the kids. One of the things we asked for at the committee meeting was to get inventory of our drivers by age, see how many of them are retiring within the next several years, which will put additional pressure on, you know, manning these buses. So that's, that brings us to that. We're going to have to take a look at our hazardous route policy and check the feasibility of consolidating some of these bus routes, as well as expanding the, eliminating courtesy busing in some of the areas as a possible solution. Okay, at the next meeting under transportation, we're going to ask the board to approve the parent transportation contract for a special education student for the upcoming 2020-2021 school year at a total cost of $1,700.
Thank you, Mr. Cass. Can you or Damaris remind me, I know that you've been holding extra special transportation committee meetings with a number of key players. When was the last one? And can you tell us when the next one is? And have any of these issues come up in those meetings?
The last?
Well, under the regular transportation committee meeting, those issues came up. The COVID was not on the radar screen at the last hybrid meeting. You know, so that came up at the, at the committee meeting. We have a meeting coming up on June 10th, the Transportation Committee meeting. And James has been a regular attendee and I believe Dave's come to some of them. So we have, you know, the same people coming. We do have representatives from the Police Department there also, as well as Damaris and there. So we'll see what happens at that meeting, what, if we got the inventory of drivers is ready at that point in time. And we'll give everybody a recap afterwards, but it's, this is probably going to be one of the more challenging issues the board has faced in many, many years, where you need to transport these kids to school and we're running out of drivers. And we got to buy buses. So, you know, the outsourcing is an option, so that's something that's going to be there, too.
Yeah, I agree with everything that Don has said, as well as echoing his sentiment. We are, we are faced with a challenge, a challenge that Steve has presented to us as well. Steve, during our last meeting, basically said, and I am going to echo his, his, his comments as well, is that we, as a board or as a district, should be planning for opening in September. It's not a question of if, it should be a question of how are we going to open? Because without, if we, Steve, I'm probably butchering what you said, but if we, if we just, you know, sway back and forth on whether we should open in September or not, then we're going to find, we'll continue to find excuses and not to open. However, if we take the position that we are going to open, then everyone else will fall in line and we'll just simply, they'll come up with ideas and solutions. And this transportation problem that we're faced with is one of them. There are buses that Damaris has brought to our attention that we all knew about, about two to, two to three buses a year. Every year is going to have to be taken out of commission, in which case we have to make a decision. Are we going to buy new buses and continue to struggle with finding drivers? Or do we continue to outsource and see, and potentially hire and be faced with drivers that we may not want driving in our district? So I guess that's really some of the questions. The, I guess, yeah, those are some of those, those questions that have to be discussed, whether it's today or the next meeting. But we're going to be in a tight spot.
Thank you, Mr. Kim and Mr. Cass, for dealing with these issues that face us. Can you remind me, I apologize, I forget, who from the Transportation Department is on this special committee?
Mrs. Wagner, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah.
In that committee is Sergeant um Jackson, Mr. Cass, Mr. Kim, the Transportation Department, myself, and um this coming meeting, Steve will be joining us as well.
Thank you, Damaris. Yeah, I was just um making sure, I didn't hear earlier that there were members from the um Transportation Department on that committee, so thank you. Um you guys definitely have your work cut out for you on the tenth. Um okay, I guess if there are no other questions about operations and transportation, we can move on to um good of the clause, including committee reports, correspondence, and discussion items. Um thank you, Mr. Cass, for including a brief synopsis um in operations and transportation of your committee meeting. Um we didn't, everyone didn't expressly do that, so if you feel like there was something that wasn't mentioned, please feel free to bring it up now.
Um this is James. If I may, I'd like to add something I did not mention during uh the finance section. Um Steve and Damaris has done a great job in listing the spreadsheet or providing the Board with a spreadsheet of all the coronavirus or the COVID nineteen costs, expenses that the, uh that they've incurred in preparation of opening uh for the September school year, uh opening in September for the next school year, as well as cleaning the schools after uh everyone has left. Uh so that spreadsheet was shared to us during Finance Committee, and um so there were sixty-six thousand seven hundred and fifty-four dollars of expenses that were incurred, um of which they'll be applying for a federal grant to help reimburse those costs. Um but the second tab that was part of the spreadsheet was actually um the better part of the tab, which, which was some of the savings as a result of COVID nineteen, uh since there were no substitute teachers and other areas that the district was able to save. Uh the second tab will show uh savings of approximately a hundred and sixty-six thousand, uh no, excuse me, uh total savings of about two hundred and ten thousand. So the overall savings, when you do factor in the expenses, uh winds up being about a hundred and forty-four thousand for the district. So um if there is a silver lining to everything, there you have it.
Thank you, Mr. Kim. Does anybody have anything they want to add?
Hey, Laura, it's Mike. Um I, I would add just for Personnel, um and I believe we're going to be discussing this uh on the Board a little bit more, um but we uh reviewed, I'm sorry, uh yeah, sorry, with Personnel, we reviewed um some of the non-union um end of year, beginning of year kind of salary increases and contract renewals. So I believe we'll be continuing to discuss that. It wasn't uh, wasn't something we finalized, uh but we'll be continuing to discuss it. Um and then I did want to add one additional comment, which is, thank you to Dr. Colas for her comments earlier tonight. Um and uh, you know, I really, I really appreciate her outlook just on the events that have transpired over the last several weeks and, and uh just, it, it was, it was reassuring to hear both her perspective about listening, forming a plan, and then um executing that, that plan. So I know um, I'm confident that she, her and the uh administration team will have a good plan to make sure that we are uh recognizing how we can continue to educate our kids, both uh, you know, both obviously within the classroom and, and academically, but also just as good citizens, and uh about uh how to become uh better people. So thank you for recognizing that. Thank you for bringing it up. And um if, if you haven't, uh I would potentially encourage you, if you think it's appropriate, to even post those comments uh on our website, um so that the public, in addition to be able to hear you, can, can also read them. I think they were really uh, really meaningful to me, and I appreciate you uh putting that together, Dr. Colas.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. I can do that. I was muted, sorry. Thank you. And I, I can put those online.
That's great, Dr. Colas. Thank you. Um, Mike, I wanted to ask you. Oh, uh we were talking about in, in policy. I didn't see, um, yeah, it's not listed here, but we had been talking about reviewing the policy for um the Board Agenda. Um it's, am I right that it's still, you're still working on it, but it's not ready for first reading yet for the following meeting?
That's correct. Thank you for bringing that up. I apologize. I, I did actually miss that on the minutes as well as uh my report, so I will, I will go back and edit uh my minutes. We did discuss it. Um we do have some ideas. Uh Dr. Forte created a, a draft uh that we can kind of work on as a committee, um and then we'll have uh our attorneys review it to make sure it's uh, it, it meets with all the guidelines. Um but we have, I know um Mr. Cass gave us one suggestion, which we will be uh adding, uh but if anybody else has any others they want to add, uh we certainly will take input on it. Um but yes, that's in progress, I would say, uh at least another month until we get first reading, but hopefully by um, I don't think we'll have it for the regular meeting this month, but hopefully first reading uh by next month.
Great. Thank you. And then um Mrs. Kold isn't hearing now, but do you, Mr. Anderson or Mr. Capella, have anything that you feel um you wanted to bring to the Board's attention under IMP that we haven't already covered?
Actually, I think Mrs. Kold did join. Katie, you-
Hi. I apologize. Um, you know what? I didn't, I didn't go over with Dr. Forte, Dr. Colas, what was shared, shared now, and what was to, what was just, will come out in the next meeting. Sorry, I have the dog barking.
No, that's fine. So um, so if I heard you correctly, I, you'll have something for us potentially at the next meeting? Is that what you said?
But you know, the problem is with, with this new format, you know, we discussed last time that um, I don't know, some of the items are not ready to talk, to announce. Um and I forgot at the last meeting to ask Dr. Colas what we can share at this time and what will just be coming in the next meeting, um what, when things are finalized. I don't know if they're able to share any, Dr. Colas could share anything.
I think our big thing was the survey. I think the big thing from this uh meeting was we went over the survey, and uh we're starting to talk about opening the school year, and so we can talk more about that as plans come together. But the biggest thing is the survey that will be coming out, Survey Number Two, about distance learning.
Thank you, Dr. Colas. And you said that um parents and community members should be looking for that in the next few days?
If it's approved, yes, after tonight, then we'll send that out. Yep, it's ready to send out after tonight.
Thank you. Okay, does anybody have anything else before we go to our second open comment section?
We do have our uh, our section about reopening the schools.
Do you have anything you want to discuss under that at this time, Dr. Forte?
Yes, I do. Just um, just to make a few announcements. So we have, we set up five committees. They've been meeting to, to uh get set to reopen in September. We are supposed to receive some new guidance from the NJ DOE by June fifteenth on September, on uh opening in September. Our Wellness Committee met last week. In attendance was, was representatives from the Morris County Department of Health. They've been, they've been tremendous helping guide us into what, what we can do and try to prepare. And we've been making drafts of plans, kind of like Plan A to Z, or maybe we're down to A to D. And if this happens is what we do, if this happens, what we do, but we're, we're waiting patiently for the um, for the guidance from the state. Also, our survey, if you saw that you just passed, did have two questions related to the reopening of schools, because that's, that's really where we're at right now, and our, and a lot of our energy needs to be put into, how do we reopen the schools? Not if, but how. So that's what we're, that's what we're working on as a team, to get ready to, to be ready to open schools in September. Um and the last part would be for Dr. Colas and, and her committee.
Yeah, we're just looking, our committee is Instruction, and we have three phases. The first is to identify just what students need to be uh placed in which programs, and we would have to do that whether it was virtually, virtual or live. So we're just about done with that process. The second stage is planning for uh social distancing. So as Dr. Forte alluded to, we do have nine scenarios that we, everything from a hundred percent virtual to a hundred percent live, and every, and seven in the middle of different hybrids that we're working out, and looking at all the different materials we can purchase for social distancing. And then the final phase will be, over the summer, revising the curriculum to account for remediation. Uh how do we close gaps that may have occurred during distance learning? So we're just about done with Phase One and moving, at the same time, we've already been moving into Phase Two, which is planning for social distancing. That's it.
Thank you, Dr. Colas and Dr. Forte. I think that um as a parent and a Board member, I think it's reassuring to hear the district talking about moving forward with plans of hopefully opening and um taking the stance that we are looking forward to opening, but that leaves us nine potential scenarios of everything in between, as Dr. Colas said, from one hundred percent virtual to one hundred percent in-person. So um I can't imagine the effort that that takes, but um I appreciate uh all the effort that you and the administrative teams are, are putting forward, so thank you very much. Does anybody have anything else before we go to um our second public comment section? Okay, so um it is eight thirty-eight PM, and this is um our second public comment section. So if any member of the public has a comment or a question for the Board, um please feel free to unmute yourself and address us, or um type your comment in the chat section on the um right-hand side of the screen, and we're just gonna give everybody a full minute to make any comments if they have any. Okay, I'm guessing no one has come up on the screen. I haven't heard anyone, and it is now eight thirty-nine, so we are going to um close the second public comment section. Um we do have a need for a second executive session tonight, but I would like to note for the public that when we um come out of executive session, there will be no further voting. Um so um I guess I can make the motion that we convene an executive session in accordance with Section E of the Open Public Meeting Act. The purpose of this closed session will be to discuss, discuss negotiations and personnel. Is that right, Dr. Forte?
Yes, it is.
Uh minutes of this session will be made available to the public when the need for confidentiality no longer exists.
Second?
I mean, one person. Was it Mr. Anderson?
Sure.
Yeah, I was one of them. You can, yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, we are in executive session at eight forty PM. Um so there's a second Google Meet invite. Um if we could all close out of this one and go to that separate invitation?
So um we own, I don't have it. I think you just sent it to the Board members. I don't know if you, who you need from the administrative team on there?
Oh, I apologize. Um, yeah, I think that, I think we just need you, Steve. We're gonna be talking um negotiations, so, okay. Um I will send it to you.
I just sent him the link.
Oh, thank you. Okay, so we'll see everybody there in a minute.
Make sure we hang up for this one.
Yep, hang up.
Go ahead, Damaris.
Damaris, I can't hear you, but my guess is that you're asking us about times and noting the time, the end of the executive session, and then the, the motion to close the meeting and taking notes from that. Is that right?
That's right. Thank you. And I'll look into my microphone issues.
No problem, and I'll take those notes and forward them over to you.
Thank you.
Okay. Good night, all.
See ya.